We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at WCVU's cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Aikerson.
Here.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Grayub.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Euler. Councilmember Rigenbach. Councilmember Ruckregal.
Here.
And Councilmember Turner.
Present.
You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a couple of proclamations this evening. We're going to start with Jim Wilhelm Day. If those folks want to join me here at the center podium. You're not going to make him come up all by himself, are you? Come on up. Oh, yeah, come on up. Strength in numbers. Hey, Jim. I'm good.
Whereas WTVP began the highly-recognized series Illinois Adventure in 1985, and whereas Jim Wilhelm hosted this longstanding iconic travel program created and written by executive producer William Baker, and whereas Jim Wilhelm explored areas throughout the state of Illinois for the past 32 years, and whereas Jim Wilhelm inspired viewers to visit and travel to the many great museums, parks, historical sites, and interesting places in Illinois, and whereas Jim Wilhelm has faithfully served not only as host of WTVP's Illinois Adventure, but also as an ambassador throughout the state, and is now retiring from the series. And now, therefore, I, Jamar DeSmer, of the city of Peoria, do hereby proclaim August the 10th, 2017, as Jim Wilhelm Day in Peoria, and we applaud the efforts of WTVP in providing this quality program to enrich the lives in our community.[602.79][602.79](applause). I'm not sure how our friends at WTVP are going to work this, if they're going to start, like, doing some reruns and stuff, because it's just not going to seem the same without turning on WTVP and seeing where Jim's adventures take us. It's been such a fantastic ride for our community and for so many people that have gained so much knowledge and so much information by your hard work. But on behalf of the Peoria City Council and our community, Jim, we wish you many good years of good health and thanks for what you've brought to our community.
Thank you very much. You're very welcome.[645.54][645.54](applause). I only wish, maybe I could have gotten this a little earlier in the day, I might have been able to get a free breakfast out of Eddie Children's.[657.23][657.23](laughter) Children's where I go about five days a week, but it's too late for that, I guess. You know, no matter how cynical you get, or how old you get, or what a big liar you are, I don't think any anybody who doesn't like recognition for their work and who doesn't like to have it recognized. So, I really appreciate the effort of everybody who's involved, with the people from the station, the city council, and I guess most of all, the people from the tri-county area for WTVP's listening area, the people who've watched the show all these years. So, I owe a lot of thanks to a lot of people, so thank you all very much.[696.06][696.06](applause).
Next up is the Heartland Health Services Healthcare Week. I think we have a number of people that are going to join us. Councilman Ruckregal's going to join us as well.
Whereas community health centers in the midst of economic turbulence are expanding to accommodate increased demand in addition to treating more of our citizens regardless of insurance status or ability to pay, and whereas community health centers are models for managing chronic disease, reducing racial and ethical disparities, and curbing infant mortality and preventable death while upholding the highest quality of care in a cost-effective manner, and whereas community health centers serve populations often left outside of the mainstream of the American healthcare system, namely homeless citizens, prisoners re-entering society, and migrants and seasonal laborers, farm workers. And whereas every day, community health centers are developing new approaches to integrate a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services to meet the needs and challenges of their community. And whereas attention turns to supporting community health center as part of the commitment of the city of Peoria to the provision of accessible, high-quality healthcare, and whereas National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to recognize America's health centers, their dedicated staff, board members, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth since the first health centers opened their doors more than 50 years ago. During this National Health Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of America's health centers and their vital role in shaping the future of America's healthcare system. And whereas citizens are urged to recognize that Heartland Health Services has improved health and the quality of life in Peoria since 1991, and whereas all citizens are welcome regardless of insurance coverage at the five Heartland Health Services sites, East Bluff, Garden, Carver, Armstrong, and the Human Service Center. Now, therefore, I, Jamar DeSmer, of the city of Peoria, do hereby proclaim August the 13th through the 19th as National Health Center Week in Peoria, and we encourage all Americans to take part in this week by visiting their local health center and celebrating the important partnership between America's health centers and the communities they serve.[923.06][923.06](applause).
There are a whole lot of people that deserve a lot of thanks, and many of them are standing behind me. I'm going to ask Councilman Ruckregal, who is also a member of the Heartland Board, to say a few words and give those recognitions for us. Thank you.
Just a little correction there. I don't serve on the Heartland Board, I serve on the United Way Board, but the Heartland is a wonderful partner of the United Way Agency. And, you know, we know that to be a whole community, we've got to be a healthy community. And I think when we look back to a December 10th day in 1991, when what really was the foundation of what we have in front of us right here started at the Bishop's House with all volunteer staff with the exception of one person. We saw the community's commitment to make sure that we had health services available for all of our community. And in 2004, when we made that leap, which wasn't necessarily easy because it was moving the model a little differently to become a federally qualified health clinic, we made that next step to be able to provide more services to our community. And we look at now what Heartland Health Services has really become, with services on the east bluff as well as the south side at multiple locations. And we're not just providing a safety net for health services, we're providing wonderful health services that anybody can partake in. And from the United Way perspective and from Peoria alignment, we see that it is not just about the services that are provided within the building, they're actually looking at how it can be a healthy community, whether that be for the functioning that they're doing on Peoria alignment, or with their programs that they're doing with United Way, such as the diabetes program. They're looking for the health of our full fabric of all of Peoria. And I think they really ought to be commended for them, because if they could look at what started out at that 1991 day and see the number of services that they're able to do now, I think that they would be proud. So, congratulations. It has been a wonderful 26 years almost, and Charles, will you come up and say a couple of words?
Thank you, Mayor Artis, and council members, and the city of Peoria. For the honor of the proclamation making next week National Health Center Week, special shout-outs to Councilmember Ruckregal and Moore, who have been very supportive of our efforts in the city of Peoria. As Councilmember Ruckregal just mentioned, Heartland Health Services began as Heartland Community Health Clinic in 1991 as a free clinic on the south side of town, downtown at the Bishop's House, with an all-volunteer staff, with the unwavering support of the city, community, our board of directors, who many of them are here today, thank you, and our mission-driven staff, again, many of them are here today. We've grown to five locations, as the mayor already mentions, and Councilmember Ruckregal had mentioned, but we're now serving 18,000 residents of the Peoria area. We are honored and humbled and looking forward to providing high-quality healthcare for all the years to come, where everyone is welcome at Heartland, regardless of their ability to pay, any issues that they may have, they are always welcome at Heartland. So, thank you.[1164.65][1164.65](applause).
Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the joint city council and town board meeting held on July 25, 2017. It's printed.
That motion seconded by Councilmember Turner. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Seeing no lights, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We're at the consent agenda. 17-244 is a communication from the city manager and director of public works with a request to approve the following. A is a one-year contract extension with the Cleaning Source until September 30th, 2018, in the amount of $321,107 for janitorial cleaning of city buildings, and B is a one-year contract with Lindsay's Dependable Cleaning until September 30th, 2018, in the amount of $60,867. 17-245 is a request from the Advisory Commission on Human Resources to approve the 2018 CDBG Public Service Application. 17-246 is a request to approve an agreement between the city of Peoria and Bradley University, which sets forth the terms and conditions for customized street name signs around the Bradley campus. 17-247 is a request to approve a resolution of the city of Peoria concerning support of the 2016 Economic Development Assistance Program City of Peoria grant application for the reconstruction of North University Street between Pioneer Parkway and Townline Road. 17-248 is a communication from the city manager with a request for the following. A is to approve the creation of the South Village Commercial Property Rehabilitation Program, and B is to adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2017 amended annual budget relating to the use of the South Village TIF fund balance. 17-249 is a request to approve the site application for a Class H temporary outdoor liquor license from Illinois Valley Public Telecommunications Corporation, WTVP, for an event to be held in the alley behind 736 Southwest Washington Street on Commercial Street to State Street to Southwest Water Street on Sunday, August 20th, 2017, and that completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any items removed from consent this evening? Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Items 244, 245, and 17, 248. Thank you.
44, 45, and 48. Thank you. Any other items to remove from consent? Seeing no lights, we have a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, now we have a light. Thank you. Councilwoman Jensen.
246.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the remaining items. Councilman Seer, seconded, Councilman Ruckregal. There's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
17-244, are they two contracts, one with the Cleaning Source and one with Lindsay's Dependable Cleaning?
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Mr. Mayor, do you need two motions?
In this case, we do not.
Okay, thank you. The only reason I pulled this out was because, as in the past, I've always talked about our contracts and how we're managing our contracts, and what is the minority participation in our contracts. And as was last week, I was able to go through six or seven of the contracts in advance of our meeting and saw that that information was embedded in the documents last week, so I didn't have to speak, last meeting, so I didn't have to speak to those. But this is a special case where the Lindsay's Dependable Cleaning came on as a result of her being mentored by Cleaning Source. Lindsay's is an African-American company, and Cleaning Source brought them on as a mentee. And here, some years later, I think it was last year, they broke out on their own and became, on their own right, able to achieve contracts. And so, I just wanted to bring this to your attention as something, this is what we aspire to. This is exactly what I like to see. Cleaning Source didn't have to do that, but they felt it was the right thing to do. And now, Lindsay's Dependable Cleaning is out on their own right, getting their own business. So, with that, I'd like to move for approval. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Seconded by Councilmember Turner. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
17-245 is the request to approve the 2018 CDBG Public Service Application.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this item, you may recall for a lot of years, Chairperson Nancy Rakoff used to come to us and speak about these items, and, you know, Nancy stepped down and she left some big shoes, and those shoes are being filled by, I wanted to recognize her, she's in the room, Chairperson Jessica Zoback. Jessica, could you stand for a second so everybody knows who you are? Hi, Jessica. Jessica has stepped into Nancy's role, and she, some big shoes Jessica has to fill, but she stepped in and she's doing a great job, so I wanted you all to know that Jessica was here. Thank you, Jessica. And then Catherine is always the city staff person who is managing this program, and I've always given her very good compliments, because Catherine does a very good job in keeping us informed. The reason I pulled this off was to make you aware, as if you weren't already aware, of all of the state of Illinois and all of its issues. Let me just put it like that. And as a result of a lot of things that are happening with the state of Illinois budget, a lot of organizations have been impacted here in Peoria. In looking at what's happening with those organizations that have been impacted, looking at, taking into consideration the 24/7 Wall Street report that came out the last couple of years, two years ago, we were number six, and then last year, we were number one worse for African-Americans. I felt it was necessary to mention that because this commission has taken on the bold choice of looking at the items that were available for groups to submit requests for funding with those two things in mind. For those of you who are new to the council, you really can't appreciate how hard this group works until you see them in there working. And then you throw in the mix somebody like myself, who asks a lot of questions, and they provide answers and discussion that helps me think through some of the things we're talking about, and I hope I'm able to do the same for them as well. And this year, as in previous years, I'm very happy to move to approve the budget as they've outlined.
Okay. That motion is seconded by Councilmember Turner. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question. I didn't have my material from last year to compare it to you, but I'm just wondering if the six criteria that the commission selected as the top six priorities, are those the same six as the last few years? Do you know? Director Black, or?
Catherine can come up. I think there was one change to the six.
Yes, there's one less priority selected this year by the commission.
And why is there one less priority? Because, is it because of less money, or?
It's just the way that the voting fell out this year. The commission during their discussion decided to go with their top six based on the voting results.
What's the one that dropped out?
It was for battered and abused spouses.
Okay. And was there any discussion about dropping that off, other than it just didn't get, wasn't one of the top six?
That was mainly the discussion, was about what the top items were and where that cutoff point should be in terms of how many priorities to select.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing no lights, we have a motion seconded. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Seventeen dash two forty-six is the request to approve an agreement between the City of Peoria and Bradley University for street name signs.
Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions on how this plan, when it was brought forth to the city, whether I don't know if either Director Black or if I should direct my question, maybe if there's anybody here from Bradley, I'm not sure if there is. It's my understanding that this plan wasn't taken to the West Bluff Council or kind of vetted with the neighbors before it came forward? Does anyone know? I guess it's my understanding, just shortly before the meeting, that it found out this... Bradley didn't take this plan or this idea, or even let the West Bluff Council know that they were planning to do this, or the neighborhood groups, to request this permission to have special signs?
I'm not for sure if they did or not. I mean, if they were working directly with us at Public Works, and I don't believe it did go to the West Bluff Council.
So I get... I just have some concerns with moving forward with this tonight without the neighborhood having had any input on this change, because these signs, even though it's primarily with, you know, around Bradley's boundaries, it is not just within their institutional plan. It goes up to Fredonia and all the way down to Main Street. So I do have some concerns with us approving it without having had that neighborhood input. So I guess if I'd like to ask for a deferral for two... or I don't know if two weeks is enough time, if the council would agree to that. So I make that move, that motion.
What's the deferral time?
I don't know if two weeks is enough for them to go to the neighborhood. I'm not sure when their meeting is. So I would say maybe a month, four weeks?
Is there a second?
Denise's, sorry.
Seconded by Councilmember Moore. We have a motion to defer, so we will be speaking to the deferral. Councilman Graeb.
That deferral is to defer for one month, is that correct?
Yes.
One clarity that I think we need to have is, in reference to Director Reese, this is for you, the color red is not supported by federal government rules. And so, you know, with the Korean situation, everything else going on, they just might send a note to Peoria stating that since they didn't approve, we have to take them down. Is that what could happen, according to this memo?
Possibly, yes. It's specifically, we tried to design it to where we stayed away from state routes. Because if Normal ran into this situation, and they went out and put them up on state routes for ISU, and they were very similar signs, and they had to take them off the state routes...
These aren't on-state routes.
Not on-state routes. These are all the streets that...
These are not IDOT-controlled routes. And how many of these signs are not part of the institutional thumbprint? Maybe three?
Yes, I would... yeah. I would say... I'm trying to count them here real quick.
Well, we know that Bradley University always tries to be a good neighbor. And they have done an huge amount of work, yeoman's work, to work with the West Bluff, the West Bluff Council, on all kinds of projects, including the $100 million ongoing project. And so I don't imagine that this small project is going to give them any heartburn if they have to review it as an opportunity to run it past the West Bluff Council. I don't think it's time-sensitive, but I do think it's part of their iconic branding of the institution. And I think the people of the West Bluff know what an integral part Bradley plays in their community. And I think everybody in Peoria knows how important Bradley University is, as one of our top five employers, and that Bradley has proclaimed frequently that it's here to stay, which shows a lot of loyalty. And so I really don't think this would be a problem at all. I think, now that I think about it, West Bluff Council, probably, do we have any of these WestMain merchants represented at the West Bluff Council? So I think that would be an appropriate move. And if it's a one-month deferral, I would support it, so we can make certain all the i's have been dotted and the t's crossed.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? Okay, we have a motion to second for a deferral to the second. That would be the first meeting in September. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
And that date for deferral is September 12, just to clarify. Seventeen dash two forty-eight is a request to approve, A, the creation of the South Village Commercial Property Rehabilitation Program, and B is to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2017 amended annual budget relating to the use of the South Village TIF fund balance. And we do need two separate votes and motions and votes on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move for approval. And well, no, this is a comment, because I pulled it off. Thank you. This is a program that I asked city staff to create as a result of receiving four or five phone calls from businesses in this geographic area for your reference. The boundaries are... and help me if I mix up Mr. Setti, Director Assistant. Adams to Martin Luther King, Western to MacArthur Highway, MacArthur's... MacArthur Highway. So those are the boundaries of the South Village TIF. So we're talking about only the commercial properties that fit inside that footprint. Now, some of you may be familiar with some of the larger items that fit within that footprint. You've got the now closed butternut bread facility. You've got some... there are not a lot of commercial buildings in that footprint, unfortunately. Most of them are on Western. There are some on MacArthur Highway, and maybe a couple inside the boundaries, inside the residential footprint. The intent of this program is, just as with the residential program, is to assist building owners in improving their properties. As most of you understand, if you improve your property in certain ways, when the tax assessor comes out and looks at your property, it's deemed to be more valuable, and therefore you have more taxes that you have to pay. And so folks are not balking at that at all. Rather, improving the properties allow for a better look to the area. So if you've got the residential on one side and the commercial on the other side, all pulling in the same direction, then you're improving the entire community. It is my hope that these buildings being improved will allow for more customers to come in, because they see that it's more of an appealing place to come into. More customers translate into more sales. More sales translate into needing more employees. More employees translate into the employment rate in that district going down. And so it's a symbiotic relationship between the residential and the commercial, all pulling in the same direction. As you notice on here, it is a 50% match, and the commercial property owner has to come with their half first. They have to spend their money before we spend our money. But whatever they come to us with has to be approved, an approved TIF renovation. So they can't just say, "I want to come in and do whatever they suggest," and we say, "Okay, fine." Rather, they have to submit an application when it's prepared. It comes in, and Assistant City Manager Chris Setti will be reviewing those applications. And to the degree that money is still available and the work that they want to complete is eligible, then they will get that approval to move forward. I don't want to insult your intelligence. I'm sure you've read the document, so I won't go too much into detail. But that is what this program is designed to do. There is a limited amount of money on it, so... and I don't anticipate there being any problems going through those funds. For those listening at home, this does not come out of our regular budget, because, yes, we will be talking about that later, but this is not part of that. This cannot be used for the regular budget, so it doesn't impact that at all. Rather, it will be impacting a community that has long been neglected and could use this infusion. Thank you. With that, I'd move for approval.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Turner. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing no lights, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. And on item B, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for approval of item B.
Motion to approve, seconded by... second, Councilmember Ruckregal. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We're at regular business. Seventeen dash two fifty is a presentation from the city manager and the finance director comptroller with a request to receive and file the quarter ended June 30, 2017, unaudited financial report.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have three things that we'd like to cover with you. Director Scroggins is going to walk through the second quarter financial report. And then we have a slide deck that we want to look back at some fiscal trends from 2012 through 2016, and then look ahead from 2017 through 2021, to kind of look forward as we move into the budget season here, and we start to craft a two-year spending plan for fiscal years 2018 and 2019. You have a copy of the PowerPoint on your desk. It is... it has the blue header, just like you see up on the screen. There's also a second landscape document that has the city logo at the top and says Financial Trend Analysis 2012 through 2016. There are nearly fifteen more slides in that presentation that I'm not going to cover this evening, but it's for your reading and review. And, you know, at a future council meeting, we can certainly discuss those items as well. So with that, I'll turn the floor over to Director Scroggins to start first, to talk about the second quarter of this year and kind of where we're standing, and then we'll look back and look forward.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I've included a copy of the second quarter report on your desk. When I sent them to you via the agenda, I put them in an Excel spreadsheet. You may not have realized there was three tabs, so I provided a hard copy for your ease of reading. Again, we talked about this at the end of the first quarter. This report is broken up into three different areas. The first three pages consist of the change in fund balance. The next three pages are our revenues, budget compared to actual. And the last three will be a summary of our expenditures, budget to actual. So turning to the fund balance page, on page one, as you can see, our general fund has, at this point in time, a $500,000, approximately $500,000 increase in fund balance. That's good. I prefer a lot more, but that's... it's better than a loss. We are on target with some of our expenditures, and our revenues are still trailing, and I'll get into those in just a minute. Included in the fund summaries is each of our approximately forty funds. They're broken out by our major funds, which we consider major funds, the public library, capital improvements, health benefits, et cetera, as you can read, and then other governmental funds. Our total increase in fund balances for the period ended June 30 is about $10 million. Significant portion of that is in restricted revenues, like our TIFs and road funds at this point. I'd like to focus a little more on the revenues here, and at the end of the second quarter, which is on page four. Really focus more on the general fund revenues, because these fund all of our operational expenses. As you can see, our sales tax numbers are trailing the budget numbers by about 6% for the state sales, municipal sales tax, and it's down approximately 3% over 2016. One saving grace here is our local sales tax consistently is exceeding budget. This primarily driven by, as we've talked about in the past, internet sales. Our state income tax allocations are on target at this point. They're a little higher than anticipated, but still down from last year. Again, our home rule sales tax, while they are higher than what they were last year, we recognize that full quarter percent for the first six months this year, and we didn't last year, because it didn't go into effect until July 1st. The basis is trailing about 6%. Similar to that of the state sales tax. Hotel restaurant taxes are at budget, but still down from the previous year. So our main economic revenues, and we'll get into this later in the presentation, are trailing budget at this time, and are lower than what they were last year. With that being said, I'll turn it over to the expenditure page on page seven, which I'll just focus on the general fund again. Our general fund expenditures are doing very well. We're at about 86% of budget. We had a nice spring, and now we're starting to ramp up into the summer months, but you will see some of this maintenance start to catch up, and some of these budgets will start to approximate 90% of budget versus where they're at today. So with that being said, we still need to focus on controlling our expenditures, as our revenues are not coming in. And with that, I'd be open to any questions before we move on.
Any questions regarding fund balances for the finance director?
Thank you. The first slide that we want to walk through are really looking at some of our fiscal trends over the last five years, and kind of take a look back at what our finances have looked like, beginning from 2012 through 2016. Then we'll look forward for those years, 2017 through 2021. The first slide that we wanted to talk about is the equalized assessed value. This is obviously a reflection of the wealth that we have in our real property. So this is really looking at the taxable value of the City of Peoria. In 2012, we had an EAV that was just under $2 billion. It was $1,968,000. It was in a period of contraction. In 2012 and 2013, we were still contracting, coming out of the Great Recession. And then, beginning in 2014 through 2016, we've seen some growth in our assessed valuations and in our tax base, our property tax base. So that's been positive over the last three years, that we've seen growth of 1.5%, just under 3%, and then 3.64%. Looking forward, these numbers are going to moderate again. You know, we've seen that we have a number of homes on the higher end of the market that are staying on the market longer and are going to be selling at a lower price, probably when they do finally move, due to some of the economic downturn that we've seen with some of our major employers in town, and the restructuring of their workforce. So that's had an impact and will have an impact going forward. The challenge with EAV is that it's a three-year moving average is the way that they calculate your tax base. So as those home sales that may be depressed go out over the next couple of years, that's going to have a long tail. It's going to last for a number of years as we go forward from there. Where does your property tax dollar go? That $2 billion and $2.1 billion of EAV goes to generate all the property taxes for the community. I apologize for the small font on this one. This was copied from our budget in brief. This is, if you assume that all of our property tax collections are $1, in the City of Peoria, about 58% of the property tax dollar goes to schools. So that goes to, whether that's Peoria Public Schools, or whether that's District 320 Twenty-three, ICC is included in that, fifty-eight percent goes to schools. The county and the park district each take about nine percent. The library takes about five percent. And then there are other smaller taxing bodies, your transit district, the soil and water conservation district, the airport authority, that, that take up about seven percent. And then the city's portion of the property tax bill is about twelve percent. So about twelve cents of every property tax dollar that's collected comes back to the city of Peoria for operations. This chart is really kind of difficult to read, but I, but I really want you to focus on the, the blue line, or the, excuse me, the purple line at the very top. The very top line is our, our levy for our general corporate fund. In two thousand and twelve, we were levying three point one million dollars for the general fund. In two thousand and sixteen, that's shrunk down to just about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And the reason for that is really threefold. One, we have seen an increase in the, the monies that we're setting aside for pensions, which would be the fire pension, the police pension costs, IMRF, and social security. In two thousand and twelve, we were levying about sixteen million dollars for all of our retirement costs. In two thousand sixteen, we're levying nineteen point seven million dollars. We have also attempted, and the council has attempted, to try and keep property taxes flat, try to keep the rate as flat as you can. And for nearly two decades, that was the case. Beginning in two thousand and fifteen, the council did increase property taxes for roads. That's where you see the levies for bonds and for roads that, that amount to about, a total of about three point two million dollars each year for roads. Those are monies that are going directly into infrastructure in the community. And then the last levies that we have are the levies for the, the library and the bonds. So this really accounts for, of that property tax dollar, about seventeen cents of that property tax dollar, because you, you set the, the property tax levy for the library as well. So I, I think the, the big thing to point out here is that really, if you exclude the library, eighty-three percent of the city's property tax levies are going to pension costs, and, and that's continuing to grow over time. This slide is a little disconcerting, and, and in the, in the other document, we talk about the fact that, that this is a negative metric that we're looking at. This is elastic revenues as a percent of our total general fund revenues. And what are elastic revenues? Elastic revenues are those revenues that expand when the economy is doing well and contract when the economy is doing poorly. And what are those revenues? Sales tax would be an elastic revenue. Income tax would be an elastic revenue. Franchise fees, utility taxes, and then licenses and permits and fees that we charge are really, you know, anything that's, that's tied to the economy would be an elastic revenue. And in two thousand and twelve, we had about eighty percent of the general fund budget was tied to those economic-based revenues. Today, it's about eighty-six percent. So those numbers are, are growing. So that's, that's a point of concern for us, that we need to look at, at trying to broaden our revenue streams to cover some areas. To drill down a little deeper, this is an, just an examination of our utility tax collections over the last five years. We've seen those numbers are starting to decline, and they're declining for a number of reasons. We, we currently levy utility taxes on electricity, telephone, water, and natural gas. Electricity, telephone, and water, they're all consumption-based, and, and it's based upon, well, excuse me, electricity and water are consumption-based, natural gas is consumption-based, and then the telephone is an excise tax that's been, that's been levied and collected by the state. What we've seen as a challenge with this, these revenue streams is that they're, they're starting to decline for a number of reasons. We've seen that people are more energy efficient, they're, they're using less, they're consuming less. And then on the telephone side, this is really based on landline telephones, and we're seeing a movement away from landline telephones towards cell phones. And so you're seeing across the state, when you look at the, the proceeds of, of telephone excise taxes across the state, those numbers are, are dropping considerably. And we're seeing that, I, I had a chance to look out at the Department of Revenue's numbers of, of Naperville and Aurora, just to kind of get an example, and their numbers are dropping even faster than ours. And it's, I think it's a reflection of, of the movement away from, from utility taxes, or at least landline telephones. The next slide talks about our income tax proceeds. This shows you budget to actual for the last five years. We, income tax, for many years, we received ten percent of the, of the income tax proceeds as part of the, the state's collections and the agreement that was in place. When the first income tax hike went into effect, the state did not pass on any of that increase to us. Instead, they, they basically held us harmless, and instead of getting ten percent of the increased dollar amount, we got, I think it was eight percent of the, of the dollar amount that came back. So now, they have again increased the, the income tax going forward that we'll see in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. The problem is, this year, they've decided to reduce the amount that they're going to distribute to us by ten percent. What they've stated that they will do in its, in its stead is that they're going to accelerate some of their payments to us, which will help from a cash flow perspective, but it's, it's still going to be an impact. I think we're anticipating about a million dollar hit in, in terms of the amount of income tax that would be coming in. So overall, we're seeing, and, and this is both the, the personal income tax and the, no, this is, this is just the corporate income tax, right?
Corporate and personal, yes.
Yes. So it's about eleven million dollars of, of what we're seeing, so it's a significant portion of our revenue streams as well. Now I want to move on to two of the biggest revenue streams we have, and that's our sales tax. First is the state sales tax and the local use tax. We, we have a state sales tax, which is one percent on all purchases, retail purchases in the city of Peoria that gets sent back to us from the state of Illinois. And then there's also a local use tax. If you purchase any goods that may be eligible for taxation, either online, or if you purchase them, if you purchase a vehicle outside of, of the state, you will have to pay a portion of that sales tax, a local use tax, back to the state of Illinois when you, when you buy that vehicle, and that gets remitted back, a portion of that gets remitted back to the city. And what we've seen is that, we've seen that our, overall, that this continues to grow at somewhat of an inflationary level. But, but what's happened is that, that we're seeing a growth rate on the state sales tax that is much smaller than what we're seeing on the local use tax. There's a shift from people, you know, buying stuff at a brick and mortar retailer to going online and buying that. And so we're starting to see that that growth in those online sales are coming in. But the difference is, our local use tax is a portion of this total twenty-four million dollars is about two and a half million dollars. So it's a smaller portion of the, of the total pie. So it's, it's one of the challenges that we face. The other, the other revenue stream that is, is important to us is our home rule sales tax. This is the, the tax that, that we have the authority to levy. It does not go on titled goods, and it does not go on food for home consumption. So beginning in two thousand and twelve, we started to see that, that this revenue stream was declining. And then last year, or in two thousand and fifteen, as part of that budget process, the council approved a quarter percent sales tax increase. And so you'll see from fifteen to sixteen that that number, the actual collections, have increased. It increased about a million, about a million three. We had anticipated in the budget that that number would be closer to a million seven. So that number will continue to increase as we get a full twelve months of, of that coming in, but it hasn't been growing at quite the rate that we had anticipated it would be. This next revenue stream is our gaming revenues. This is one that we have seen a significant drop in our gaming revenues, and this is really where the video gaming has affected us considerably. In two thousand and twelve, we collected about three point five million dollars in, in gaming proceeds, and that's dropped to two point five million dollars in two thousand and sixteen. So this is one that, that's, that funds our capital budget, and it's a significant challenge when we're seeing that type of, of drop in, in this revenue stream. And it, there's really no indication.
The only thing I'd like to add here is, this gaming tax slide only reflects the, the paradise. It does not reflect any of the video gaming revenues that are coming in as well. While they don't quite mitigate the loss, there, it's about a half a million dollars, I think, in two thousand and sixteen that we got from video gaming. So that will draw that number a little closer, but we're not getting a dollar-for-dollar trade-off from the video gaming. Some of the smaller communities that now have video gaming are the ones that really reap the benefit of the video gaming.
So, so that's the challenge that we're seeing with, with our gaming proceeds as well. And that goes directly to how we fund our capital budget and what we have the ability to fund. Now shifting to the expense side, this just tends to show you, this is a, a chart that shows you a breakout of each of the, the different types of, of departments or, or functions of our budget that we fund. The largest portion of our budget is the, the police. Fire and emergency communications are the, the next largest component, and then public works. If you add up all three of those budgets together, you're looking at about, about fifty-eight percent of our total budget. If you throw in capital, and most, most of our capital spend is, is in the areas of infrastructure or support for the fleet replacement that we have for police and fire and, and the efforts there, you're really looking at about seventy percent of our budget is tied up in police. It's, it's tied up in public safety and infrastructure, really. I mean, so that's a, the, the significant component of our budget. And then we have smaller elements that are debt service, all of our administrative departments, the back-of-the-house departments, the library, community development, and tourism. So all of those are, are a, a smaller portion of the budget as we move forward. The next slide I want to talk about is an area that we've been seeing significant growth in, and we'll talk about that as we look forward, and that's our, our pension costs as a percent of the payroll. We, we tend to fund our pensions as a percentage of our, our payroll. The benefit levels that are paid out to our employees are set by the state. The pension boards, whether that would be IMRF at a statewide level or the local police and fire pension boards, control the investments. And so they control how the money that, that they collect and invest on behalf of their members is invested and are responsible for the returns. However, the employee's contribution is set at a flat rate. So there's a flat contribution from the employees. The only variable, and the only variable that comes into play if the, if the fund has a poor performance year, is how much the city has to pay. And over the years, as we've seen here, those costs have increased. On the fire side, it has been trending right in between forty-eight to, to, up to as high as fifty percent of payroll. In two thousand and sixteen, it's at forty-seven percent of payroll. Police went from twenty-nine percent of, of payroll up to forty-five percent of payroll. And then the IMRF has, has moved between twelve and a half and fifteen and a half percent of pay over that period of time. And, and that's used to fund current obligations that we have for our retirees, and then also paying down unfunded liabilities that we have for all of those funds as well. Moving to our outstanding debt, this is a, this is the amount of outstanding general obligation bond debt we have. In two thousand and twelve, we had two hundred and fifty-three million dollars of outstanding debt. In two thousand and sixteen, that number has dropped to a hundred and eighty-six million dollars of outstanding bond debt that we have to pay. Roughly right now, we're paying about eighteen million dollars a year in debt service for outstanding bonds. This big drop-off was really the, the refunding of the civic center bonds. We took advantage of some lower rates and saw that, that with that refunding, we were able to, to drop off a significant amount of debt service. Our, our biggest portions of our, our debt really are tied up in the funding of the civic center, the library expansion, the, the Pier Marquette Hotel Project, and then a lot of the sewer rehabilitation work that we've done over the years is really where most of our bond debt is really tied up, are in those, those four specific areas that we would look at. This is the, this is the last slide as we look kind of backwards, and, and this is showing you the, the general fund balance and then also our cash balance. And this is a, a one that I think we wanted to, to, to point out because it's, while it's good that we, we tend to have overall fund balances that are up, our cash is down. And, and this points out that a need for us to continue to build our reserves and to be liquid in terms of the amount of, of funds that we have. We have funds that are set aside in our other post-employment benefits. A portion of the general fund is segregated for that. That's, that's required by GASB, the Governmental County Standards Board, that we have to set aside a portion of funding every year to fund future retiree healthcare costs at the, as they eventually come due in later years. We need to set that aside. Director, do you remember right now how much we've got set aside in, in our, our OPEB reserves?
At the end of sixteen, it'd be about twenty-nine million. So the, the general fund balance is about seventeen.
Yeah. So that, that is, is just one slide that we wanted to show you, that trend. Now, if we, if we can, what we'd like to do is, is, is go from there and start to look at some top-line revenue and expense figures for you, and just kind of look at this moving forward to see, to kind of project out what would happen in five years if, kind of the current trends that we're on were to remain the same, knowing that that's not going to be the case because we're going to have to make some changes to close in some of the deficits that we have this year. This is to point that out. In two thousand and seventeen, when we adopted the budget, we adopted a, a balanced budget that had overall revenues of two hundred point five million dollars and overall expenses of a hundred and ninety-nine point six. And then what we've done is we've tried to project out with that spending, and, and we'll talk about what some of those assumptions are. But you'll see that the, the budget, for the most part, it's only about a two million dollar deficit projected for two thousand and eighteen if we look at all funds. But that's not, some of those funds are segregated. As, as Director Scroggins mentioned earlier, we may have TIF funds that can't be used to pay for operations, or you may have funds that are set aside in a specific capital project that you know have to be set aside and earmarked for that. So it, it really becomes a challenge as, as some revenues fall off in two thousand and nineteen and then pick back, or some expenses kick in, and then our revenues pop back up in two thousand twenty and twenty-one going forward. But there's, there's a, a gap that we have that we know that we have to close in the long term. Some of those revenue assumptions that, that are built into these figures, we looked at, at the fact that, that licenses and permits and our fines and forfeitures and our utility taxes were growing at rates smaller than inflation. So in those figures, we built in just a one percent growth in those areas. We built in inflationary growth in sales tax and income tax and personal property replacement tax and in some of the fees that we charge. And then we built in a two percent EAV growth, but we also know that with that, we're going to have to additionally put money aside in the future to cover our, our police and fire pension contributions. Just in this upcoming year, we, I know we've already received one letter from the, the police pension board, I don't think we've received one yet from the fire pension board, that if we were to fund at the actuarially required level, it would be a two million dollar increase to the level that we're currently funding at. So if you, you take both of that together, that's a four million dollar increase on top of the, the challenge that we'll talk about in the general fund right now. So, so that's one of the challenges that we have. We, we anticipated contract costs within the garbage freeze growing faster than inflation, and then we anticipated that the fees would have to grow with that, too. And then we, we built in sewer fees to cover and fund our drainage and wet weather program. So just a quick snapshot, this looks at the, the inner ring is two thousand and seventeen, the outer ring is two thousand and twenty-one. Our local sources really remain the same as, as about seventy percent of our budget is paid for locally. About twenty-six percent comes from the state. And then we have other sources, whether that be the sale of bonds, or if that's federal sources that come into play, that amounts to usually about four to five percent of the budget. Looking at our local taxes, we looked at, at locally what our, what are, how are we generating our revenues, property taxes of that local portion? Now, we're just drilling down. If you look back at that slide, in the seventy percent, I'm just going to drill down into that portion of the pie. Nearly four. Nearly 40% of that comes from property taxes. 25% of that comes from our home rule sales tax. 15% comes from utility taxes, and then 10% comes from HRA, 4% comes from TIF, and then 10% comes from other revenues. And what we're seeing is that by looking at that out into 2021, we're going to have a greater reliance on property taxes to fund services and a continued decline in our utility tax proceeds. So we've anticipated that going forward. As we move on on the expense side, looking at these five-year projections, we built in personnel costs of growth of 2%. Contractual services and supplies, we've basically said zero growth there, just from a projection standpoint. And then looking at our healthcare costs, we anticipated 5% growth there. The continued 3% contribution growth in our GASB 45 requirements, a 2% growth rate in IMRF and the pension costs for IMRF, and then 8% for police and fire. So we've anticipated that that's going to continue to grow faster than the rates of inflation. What we haven't included here still is the sewer debt service and then the corresponding revenue that would have to go along with it for the CSO. So that's not included in any of these five-year projections. So looking at the expense side, really, I think what's striking as you look at this is that the pie tends to grow at the same rate even if we're holding down for commodities and contractuals, because our commodities and our contractuals costs are really not a considerably big portion of the budget. That really only accounts for about 12% of the budget. So even if we hold the line on those and say we're going to try and keep those costs at zero, our personnel costs tend to grow inflationarily, our benefit costs are growing. They would grow from 24% up to about 28% due to that increased contribution that we'd have to make for police and fire pensions. But then we're seeing everything else is tending to hold steady with a little bit of a decline in our debt service expenses over that five-year period. The challenge that we have, and the challenge, as I mentioned, isn't at the overall fund level. The challenge is really in our general fund, and this chart shows it for you. This is the current general fund. We had projected a budget that was balanced at $100 million with about a $500,000 surplus for 2017. We're currently projecting that $7.9 million deficit into 2018 just because of the way that our revenues are coming in. And then that balloons out to about $10 million in 2019 and then $11 million in 2020 and 2021. So that's the challenge that we face. The challenge, we can look at a lot of our other funds, the challenge is really how do we become sustainable within the general fund. On the revenue side in the general fund, the biggest portion, you'll see property tax at the very beginning was about 1%. We're not anticipating in 2021 that we would have any levy in the general fund for property taxes and that nearly 54% of the budget is going to be funded by sales taxes. So that becomes a challenge when we're seeing that sales taxes are declining. So that's a significant challenge for how we fund the general fund is that we're not using any elastic revenue streams, we're using elastic revenue streams to fund the general fund. Income taxes make up the next big portion, followed by utility taxes and user fees and the HRA taxes. So this reflects some of the challenge that we have is that we are very reliant on sales taxes to fund our operations. On the expense side, we're going to see that our personnel and benefit costs are going to continue to grow, and it becomes a challenge as we look at this in the out years. What are we going to be doing to try and move this forward, to try and bring this budget back into balance? And I'm going to jump back here because that was really the last of the slides that I wanted to talk about. In order for us to close the $7.9 million deficit, I've asked the department heads to prepare budget scenarios for me that included a 5% and a 10% budget cut scenario and what that impact would be. And the importance of that is that I wanted to establish what the impact would be on service levels if we had to cut and just cut only. Now, it may not be something that you, as the council, feel is something that's palatable, that you don't want to see us have to make cuts. And when 60% of the budget in the general fund is funding public safety and infrastructure, that becomes a big challenge, and it becomes a very big challenge in order to bring this back into solvency. So that's the first step that we're doing with this. But we're also exploring what we can do on the revenue side as well, so that we can come back to you with options about what we can do to maybe raise some additional revenues in areas we haven't thought of before or in different options, so that we can give you a menu of different options for you to consider and for you to think about. While I don't know if it will be feasible for us to cut $8 million out of the general fund without some sort of revenue increase, I just, I think at this point in time, I want to stop here and see if the council has any questions or if there's anything that we can report back to you at the next council meeting on based upon the presentation that we've given you here today.
Questions, Councilman McGreeb.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for all your hard work on this. I think it's on Tuesday night when we're sitting here in August, a pretty sobering report, but I think a very important report because there's a lot of information in here that I think is going to guide us over the next couple of weeks, because I don't think that you start on a budget by working backwards. You've got to start knowing where you are and where the revenues are. Couple of questions on this. And on fund balances, in a couple of places, we see where that is currently growing a little bit, but there are different kinds of fund balances, as we've talked about before, ones that are targeted towards a certain area, ones that are really unencumbered. And those unencumbered ones are really the important ones because they allow us to be able to do things in the future. Dream, build, they're kind of our savings that we get to move around where we need to. Where are they over the past five, six years? Where do we stand now and at what percent do we have for unencumbered fund balances?
Director Skraggins, you want to talk about? I'm going to jump back to the slide that kind of shows.
Well, I think I'll refer to the sheets that I handed out, the second quarter report, page one. If you look about a quarter of the way down where it says unassigned, about $9.7 million right now, that would be the general fund, unassigned fund balance. So that would be taking out the designated amounts for debt service that wouldn't include the GASB 45 funds. So when you're looking at that 40 million that we had over there, as I said before, approximately 28 million, 29 million of that was for the post-employment benefit fund, the other 17 related to the general fund, and that's with a 9.
So as we've sat here over the past five, six years as council's kind of working through these budget cycles, where are we percentage-wise now compared to where we were five, six years ago on that?
Well, five years ago, we were approaching 20% in the unassigned of our expenditures, so around $19 million. Our projected use of fund balance for 2016 from the audits, about $6 million. So going forward, that's why we're down to about $9 million right now. So we're approximately 9% or where we need to be at 25%.
And these aren't really in any particular order, so excuse me for jumping around a little bit, but on the local sales tax, we see that as potentially dropping down, but there's a residual effect. And I guess, just wanting to see if those are kind of reflected in here, as we see local sales tax go down, that means that we aren't employing as many people, which affects our income line. That means that buildings are going vacant because they're probably not being utilized to the full capacity. We're going to see some real estate tax problems there. We have an expense in code because code is going to have to help keep those buildings looking well. And then there's some other associated costs in there. Are those costs that would sort of be the offshoot of a lower income or a lower sales tax coming in, are those figured into the expenditure increases?
Not specifically. I think what we've done is we've built in just some assumptions about some flat expenditure growth and personnel costs as we stand today. You know, as we would craft a spending, a more detailed spending plan for '18 and '19, we'll look at trying to take into some of that into consideration as we look at what we might know that we can control over the next two years.
On the EAV, and the three-year trail is, can be either a win or a loss depending on what side of the coin we are on, and obviously, we know what's going to be coming down because we've seen where the house sales and the prices are hitting compared to where they originally marketed. And as that continues, we have other property owners that will be bringing up their property taxes and having those reevaluated. So it's not just the houses that are being sold, it's a residual effect of what all is up here. We show up EAV or a, are we, and I know other governmental bodies are having the same conversation, are we consistent with the information that they're seeing? And when we look at 2021 and we're looking at the property, the ability for property taxes to help on this, are we taking into account that three-year average? Because if we think that we're going to be going down for the next three years, 2021 is not that far away, and all of a sudden, it looks like we're going to have a higher relationship to that.
You're exactly right, and I think that we do, first, we do talk with the supervisor of assessments, Dave Ryan, who really looks at all of the home sales, talks with the township assessors, comes up with some estimates on where he thinks that that equalized assessed value is going to be and what that growth rate or contraction rate might be. In discussions with Dave that Director Skraggins has had, I think we're looking at a slight increase for next year and then followed by probably some contraction beginning in 20, what would be our 2019.
Right. For the 2017 level, which would be the EAV base this year, there's right around a 1.5% growth, because we really haven't seen the impact yet of what's coming down, and as you said, at the three-year average. And then it would drop down for the 2018 level, and then after that, they're looking at projecting some negative growth.
Okay. I'm going to take the next question down to homeowners sort of level, because over the past number of years, a lot of people have refinanced their home mortgages. And when you do, you get to do two things with those savings. Either you help it to pay down debt or you go and you spend it on other things. I would probably say that the good thing is to sort of invest that back into yourself and start paying down some debt quicker, which ultimately gets you out of that line and gets that moved. We took a significant hit on refinancing, saved us some dollars. Can you talk a little bit about where those dollars went? How much of those were parlayed? Because it doesn't seem to be where we're seeing a huge decrease in debt that would translate to the refinancing opportunity.
Well, the average debt service payments that he spoke of going into the future of 18 million would have been approximately $21 million if we would have done the refinancing of the Civic Center bonds. So we saved approximately $15 million on the $65 million bond issue.
Do we right now have a number for average debt that we're carrying per citizen of Peoria? Because I think that every citizen in Peoria, there's a number that's associated, I guess, with the debt we're having to carry. Do we know what that number is right now?
If you give me a minute, we can calculate it.
For 2016, it was $1,617 per person. And that's included in your trend analysis, second to the third to last page.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions for the manager staff on this portion? Councilman Jensen.
Mr. Mayor, there we go. I guess I just have, I have a few questions right off the bat. I guess my first is about the plans for public input. You know, I know that I always get on that bandwagon and always bring that up, so I'd like to know what the plan is for that.
We're going to schedule some public budget meetings through the rest of the month of August and into the early part of September. So we'll have those scheduled, and we'll get a calendar out to you. In addition, on August 15th, we'll have the Budget Challenge Tool will be live and we'll have that ready to go. We'll have a rollout of that next week on Monday and then unveil that. That's where the public will be able to sit in, basically your seat, and come up with different suggestions and scenarios that they can look at and based upon the fiscal condition that we're outlining for you this evening. And we'll have that open for a month so that they could provide that input, and then we'll bring that back and present the findings that we've had from those meetings to you here.
Do you, so when, how long, about, they'll have about 30 days to give input?
We'll have about 30 days to give input, and then the plan would be that we would take that into consideration as well as coming back to you and presenting that back to you here and probably the end of September, and then presenting to you by the middle of October the full budget for your consideration.
Will the meetings that you're starting in August and September, will you have one in every district, like the last round 20, two years ago?
We haven't really discussed that at a staff level yet, but that's something we can take into consideration if we want to do it that way. I mean, we've done it before. I don't see why not.
And so you'll probably have at least five? Is there enough time to do that?
Sure. Sure. We can do it over multiple nights during the week, if not a problem.
And then we'll, notes from those meetings can be put on the website or you'll tally up the input like you did last time?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Kind of just a basic question I have from the presentation, the second to the last slide, I guess it's the last slide, and it's a comparison between 2017 general expenses and 2019?
That, it was 2021.
It should be 2021. Okay, I was going to ask why that one was different than all the others.
We'll make that change.
I think that's all I have right now. Thanks.
Councilman McGreeb.
Director Skraggins, do we have a surplus of homes for sale right now in the city of Peoria?
To my knowledge, yes. I'm not looking for one, so I'm not quite sure.
I think it would be instructive to find out if that's the case and if there is a surplus, if it's mostly at the high end of the scale versus low, and if there is a bit of a depression or downward push on home prices, if that might not stimulate first-time home buyers or other home buyers, causing some of our figures to potentially change as we get more and more homes being sold, what does that do to our budget?
Depending on the sale price, which could lower the EAV and lower the property tax. If it's bringing people from outside the community and new people into the community, it's going to spend money in the community, it could help our budget.
So it could be a positive influence.
Yes, it could.
If the real estate market picks up. And it's not currently down, correct?
Can't answer that question.
See, I think these are, what the council is getting right now is a picture of certain indices. We don't have this fleshed out completely, and I think that's a very important barometer of how our economy will be doing. I know there's been some concern about the executives who have been moved to Deerfield and their homes being for sale, but that tends to be at a higher level and not necessarily at a lower price level. There are a lot of people who are interested in buying now because rates are low. And so I think there's a lot going into this, but I think the devil will be in the details when we finally get it fleshed out. Manager, when are you thinking we're needing to make this decision? Are you wanting to make it sooner rather than later? Are you open to council direction on that? I think we've tried to get the budget put to bed before Christmas in the past, well before Christmas, but would it be strategic for us to wait a little bit longer than we have in past years?
I don't think so. I think that, you know, we have to have the budget in place by January 1st. That's when the fiscal year starts. But I would, I would think that, you know, if we continue with the goal of trying to have the budget adopted before Thanksgiving, which is where we've tended to land over the last several years, that that would give us ample time if by mid-October, we give you a spending plan.
plan that outlines, you know, with input from the public and input from you at another follow-up session like this, where we can have that conversation about both the, the expense side and the revenue side, we'll come back to you with some recommendations to, to craft a budget, and then you'll have well over thirty days to, to discuss it and deliberate on it and move forward with that.
And you're open to council suggestions too, on how best to meet the budget challenge, so to speak?
Always.
And we are maintaining our commitment to road expenditures.
In all of the, the five-year projections that we laid out, we assumed that, that additional money that was approved in 2015 is there for road improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Further questions on this portion of the report? Okay. Seeing no lights, Mr. Manager? Thank you. I think that, that's all we had as far as, as this goes. We look forward to having further discussions within the future. And we'll get the memorandum out to everybody about when we have the, the budget meeting scheduled and where they are and locations.
This is really good information. I know we appreciate it, the public appreciates it. I would also anticipate that probably by the middle of September, we'll probably have a pretty good idea about even going to a weekly council meetings with, with a regular scheduled council meeting and alternating budget meetings in between, as we did a couple years ago.
Last couple of years.
Thank you. Taking a motion to receive and file, Councilmember Moore, seconded by Councilmember Turner. If there's no further discussion on that, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We're at unfinished business.
Is there any unfinished business to come before the council this evening? Unfinished? No lights? Madam Clerk?
We're at new business.
New business to come before the council tonight? New business? Okay. Seeing none? Madam Clerk?
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
We're at citizens to address. We need the name and address for the record, please. Try to keep your comments to the timer, which is five minutes. Up first is Mr. Valley.
Valley, helping hand, resource center located at 1211 South Blaine Street, Peoria, Illinois, 61605. Good evening. Before I came here today, I spoke to a couple of people that let know I was coming here to speak with the city council tonight. And I asked for them advice, I asked them for their advice of how I should approach you this evening. And one of them said to me, well, don't be too witty. Don't be too intellectual. And try not to be too funny. And most of all, don't be so joyful. Just be yourself. Today, I want to bring to you a celebration of sorts. On July 28th, 2017, I became a free man. Those statements is so, what a blessing to say. When you look at it from my standpoint, when I say free man, I say it because on July 28th of 2017, I was no longer committed to the federal government for crimes committed here in the United States. And that made me a free man. I am free of paperwork. I am free of probation. I am free of government oversight. But during the three and a half years that I was blessed to be in Peoria, Illinois, it didn't feel as though there was any oversight whatsoever. Even though there was a strong commitment from the federal government to watch over me and to ensure that the public was safe from my presence, and to assure that I committed no further crimes, it just did not feel as though there was that huge shadow or heavy burden upon me. And the reason for that is, is because when I walked out the gates of prison, one thing was surely embedded in me. After twenty-two years of serving time for crimes I committed, I walked out that door knowing that one, God had my back, and two, the calling that He gave me was irreversible. So three and a half years later, I stand before this city council as I've stood for the last three years. And I reiterate the fact to you, and I pray that our commitment as a city to reentry programs and to supplying a support system that enables individuals to come out of prison and to move forward in life is one that this city wholly endorses. Because I am here to witness to you and let you know there are thousands, if not tens of thousands, of individuals in Peoria County and across this United States that have the same calling that I do, and that is to make a change in life, to not look back and let our history of our past hold us back from moving forward. But if it wasn't from the support system that I received from the city of Peoria, from friends, from neighbors, from council members, from outstanding citizens that mentored me, supported me, and guided me, I would have never made it through the rain or through the storm. Individuals every day are being released from county jails and prisons that did, that does not have the opportunities that I was blessed with or the motivation that was given to me. It takes a strong support system for an individual to turn their life around. It takes self-esteem. It takes commitment, and it takes a desire. So today, I want to stand here and I want to tell you in the city of Peoria, thank you for your support that you've given me. Thank you for the mentorship that I have received. And for the next twenty, twenty-five years, that's how I'm expected to be alive, I got about ninety-five years in me, I will continue to give back to the community. I will continue to stand for reentry rights and protections. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Steve Tyler.
My name is Steve Tyler. I live at 1120 North Elmwood, Peoria, in the uplands. And I am the chairman of the mayor's litter committee. And my big purpose this evening is just to let you know that we're alive, that we are picking up, that we are a small band of folks right now. But we are looking for extra folks, particularly buy-in from the businesses and the various homeowners associations across our city. I want to thank several people, particularly the, the group of people that are meeting Mondays at noon. We've got a loyal bunch of about a dozen of us. We meet here at City Hall, and we venture out primarily downtown, put on our bright green vests, get a litter grabber, and walk around downtown picking up trash. We do that for seven, several reasons. I think the downtown's a good place to start. It's a good place to beat the drum. There are a lot of people down here Monday noons. But the committees, those folks that are meeting Monday are most loyal. They've been out there in the rain, cold days, and this summer, we had a lot of very nice days, but several very hot days. I want to thank the mayor. Jim has actually been picking up trash with us several Mondays. He came in a nice white starch shirt one day and left. The starch shirt was pretty sweaty, and I think he had to go home and change clothes. But Jim, thanks for the help. Stacy Peterson has been a tremendous asset for our litter group, and I want to thank Stacy. She's a lot of fun to work with, and she's excellent. Si from Public Works has been terrific too. So I would say our city staff is doing a great job. The vision really, we want to have Peoria to be a clean, beautiful place for everybody to live and for the kids to grow up. You know as well as I do that that's not the case in every corner of Peoria. We have a lot of work to do, and we need a lot of people to help. But I think with your help and the help of the various sectors, we can make a big impact. Kids can live in a much cleaner environment, a much more beautiful one, and make life and standard of living much better here in Peoria. So I would ask you to spread the word. If you hear of people that want to help out the community, they don't know how to do it, sorry Stacy, but they gotta call you. She's our contact person. They could certainly call me, but now that I'm retired, I don't answer my cellphone as quickly as Stacy probably does. I want to talk to just a couple of, looks like I got a minute and seventeen seconds, but I do want to just touch on a couple of points. I think the act, part of the reason I do it, I was, I guess, fortunate enough to be president of the Chamber of Commerce in a town in Wyoming, sat in a lot of business, in a lot of meetings. Twenty-eight years with State Farm, I sat in a lot of meetings. Some of them were productive, but oftentimes I left feeling unproductive. Picking up trash, very tangible setting. Each time you use your grabber, pick up, put it in the pail, you get, you do get a, I get a sense of productivity and barn raising. So I think it's a actually a nice thing to do and gets us out. We are going to ramp up the litter committee, and we're going to hold some folks responsible. Particularly, we're going to ask the businesses to do their share. I would say that it should be a commonsensical part of their business to clean up their place of business in the morning, throughout the day, and close the day, making sure your shop looks right. So thanks for your service, all of you, and appreciate it. If you have questions, you can certainly give me a call. Steven Tyler, just like Aerosmith. So, thanks.
Steve? I'm gonna just take one minute if the council would allow it. Typically, there's not a comment period during citizens to address. It's a time for us to listen. I just want to thank Steven for his efforts in this regard. I think it's very critical in our community. We've had these litter initiatives over the years, and it's, it really makes a big difference. It talks about pride at the most basic level of our community, the pride we have in our community, the pride we have in our neighborhoods. And so we are going to make a really strong push. We got a good solid three months left of litter pickup time, and we're gonna, we're gonna use that time and really get these things going. So those in the community who are interested in helping us with this, they can contact the mayor's office, and we'll, we'll get you in touch with folks to find out how you can help us. It's my understanding that with some time this week, we're actually going to have a button on our homepage, our home council page, that you can go to and actually sign up to participate in this. So just a thanks to Mr. Tyler and his group, and urge everyone in the city to figure out how you can participate in this and help us out. Thank you for allowing me that, that short comment. Next up is Doug Johnson.
Hi there. Doug Johnson, I live at 2805 West Larchmont Lane, Peoria. So I got here a little late. I was very excited about the budget conversation, because I think that is probably one of the most boring possible conversations, but I think it's the most important. And actually, before I get into that, the, allowing you to address us back or comment back on the things that we say, get up here and have the courage to come up and give issues, it would be amazing if there was actually an opportunity for you to respond. I feel like it's more of a venting session when people are actually upset. Sometimes people come up here, and they, they actually have super important things to say, such as a former mayor coming up and talking about how he was bribed by the private water company to make the issue go away. So it'd be awesome if we could get some back and forth on that. We are looking for bold leaders, and I don't know if that's so, you know, some people have issues that you don't want to be on record responding to. I don't know what the purpose of that is. Maybe I haven't been around, around long enough. But it would be awesome to get feedback on the things that we come up here and say. So, speaking of the budget, while we were here, I just did some very quick numbers checking. And let's just assume they're somewhere around accurate. I was looking at some of the largest employers in the area. Caterpillar, average warehouse worker makes around $12 an hour. Average assembler, $14 an hour. Machine operator, fourteen. Forklift operator, $12. OSF Healthcare, average housekeeper makes $8.56 an hour. We have a lot of those around the city. Sales reps, school teachers, secondary school teachers, starting at $11 an hour, $12 an hour. So we're sitting around here talking about sales tax going down in the future, talking about property tax revenue not being the greatest anymore, and the challenges with that. And I just wanted to make a point. At the end of that whole discussion, there were only two people that said anything, had any really ideas about what we're talking about with the budget. And I don't know, this to me just seems like an absolute no-brainer. I feel like we should probably, instead of figuring out, you know, who gets this much of the pie, who gets a bigger par, we're gonna expand this much, and maybe we should make the whole pie bigger, the whole thing. And to do that, all you gotta do is raise the floor. And what that means is raising the minimum wage. And I'm sure people have come up here, talked about this and mentioned it like a million times, which is why it'd be great to get some feedback on it. But I'm thirty years old, and I've only really gotten engaged in politics over the last few years. And my, my generation is very, very apathetic. We're very hopeless. I have seen so many people my age leave this town as soon as they possibly could. And we are seeing massive unemployment among young people. And it doesn't matter how much debt we have, or, 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 you know, with the future, how we, how we buy back or reduce the debt. People need help right now, or they're going to leave. And I'm watching it happen all the time. If we were to raise the floor and give people hope, we would give them a reason to stay here. We would increase their ability to buy a home, therefore bringing in more property tax revenue. They'd have more disposable income to go out and spend money at small businesses, who we always claim to be a champion of, but really don't do anything for. And I would imagine that if we actually had the numbers on some of these issues, which Councilman Ruckregel, thank you for making the point that we do need to know our numbers before we can come up with the budget. And part of me wants to say that sarcastically, because it seems so obvious, but the other part of me... part of me feels a sense of urgency about that statement, because when I asked my district rep, he said there is no resource for knowing district-specific levels of unemployment, average pay, job numbers, basic economic data. And I think the first district numbers would probably look really bad, but at least it would give us a place to focus. But anyway, I just wanted to come up and make a point about raising the minimum wage. We really need to give people the opportunity to succeed here, and without a decent level of pay, they can't do that. A $15 minimum wage is not radical. What's radical is full-time workers living in poverty. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Sierra.
Very well known. Well, you're talking about trying to keep your city clean, and that Tyler fellow was talking about the people that police the downtown area. That's fine, you know, the man, that's good. We should. But the complaint I have is that the neighborhoods, you can go almost any of the neighborhoods and you'll see there's litter in the street. You know, we had said, I forget what, they had that program that if you see some, just even if you pick up a piece and dispose of it, it would help. But it, it really is terrible. I hate to tell you, you know, you go down to the south side of Bluff, anyplace, and you'll, and you'll see a lot of litter on the, on the streets there. The grocery stores, you'll see where people throw their garbage on the, on the ground. They, their cigarette butts, they throw them on the, on the street too. And it's terrible, you know? I've seen other cities that are, that are a lot cleaner than that. Like I told you about starting to make some rules for 4th of July, and we should preach that from the pulpit and in the schools. We start, we should start with the kids when they're little and teach them and how to do and act. And this is what they should do with the litter program too. Because I've seen school kids come by at my house and they'll have the breakfast, you know, candy bar and a sodium, they'll throw the, the candy bar wrapper on the floor. If I see them, I have them pick it up and take it home with them. But this is, we should teach our children to, since they're little, to start having some better habits, you know? I, a lot of, you know, these, these schools, they church, teaching sex education and all that bit, you know? I don't believe in that too much, but they should teach more the social behavior of our children so as they grow up, they'd be a lot better citizens and be more careful with their conduct. And so I, I hope you people are listening and do something about it, you know? Let's, wait till it happens and then you start trying to correct it, and it's never going to work. So I've been to countries, well, even Mexico, in the morning, everybody gets up early and sweeps the front of their house, you know, where they live. And it's cobblestone streets, and if, if they don't, they get that swept, they get fined. And they can put the little garbage they got in a grocery stack and put it, put it there for the garbage men to come by, because they come by every day and pick up them little grocery sacks full of whatever people threw on the ground the night before. So I think we, we got to find a program that we can make even my block and my street a lot closer. That's all I got to say for tonight, so let's go home.
Madam Clerk?
We do not have an executive session, so we're at adjournment.
We have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Grab, seconded by Councilman Seer. I'm seeing no discussion, and please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at WTVB, as well as Cable Channel 22. This evening's meeting is adjourned.